Also, the agency has reserved an across tournament in the spring too. So as they know about the product, we gave more plans right now to participate and be out there in the field. So exciting news all the way.
Thank you, Patrick. And just to touch on, I think the town appreciates what the Panthers have done. That's a huge contribution to the town, $250,000. And it's a big thank you to the Panthers. Thank you very much. And I hope we have a chance to thank them personally. Anybody want to add anything?
Well, I really like the comment made about the Special Olympics being able to utilize that field. That's a big deal and perhaps they'll return to Indian Trail year after year.
And last but not least, I'd like to thank the staff for getting the grant. I mean, that's fabulous. I mean, that's a lot of hard work. Thank you for getting out there and getting $250,000 for the town. And I think we get spoiled because you guys are so good at what you do. And you've done it before and you've done it again, and I hope you do it again and again. But thank you, thank you very much, staff, for all you did. That brings us down to new business presentations. Jimmy John's Gourmet Sandwiches. Let's see how fast you can get up here.
If I had known this was an eating meeting, I would have brought some sandwiches. I smell that pizza, man. I think everyone smells that pizza over there. I'm Andre Powell. Good to meet everyone. Thanks for having me here today. Much like the developer, this is actually not something I've ever done before. This is the fourth Jimmy John's that I've opened. And never done anything like this before, so appreciate you guys inviting us out to be here. So I don't know how much you guys know about Jimmy John's. Hopefully, all of you guys have come by and checked us out. We're over on Omen Road Road. We're on the opposite end cap of the new Dunkin' Donuts that just opened up, right in front of Sun Valley Movie Theater. So we're really excited to be there. Just to tell you a little bit about Jimmy John's, what separates us from everyone else, we bake our bread fresh all day long, every day. If our bread ever hits the point of being four hours old, we sell it as day-old bread. We don't use it for sandwiches anymore. All of our meats are all natural, so we hand slice all of our meats all day, every day. No additives, no preservatives, no nitrics, fillers, GMOs, none of that. Our vegetables are all natural. Our managers actually get to the store at about 6:00 in the morning because they're hand slicing all of our lettuce, tomatoes, cucumbers, onions. Everything that's on that make line, we hand slice it ourselves. Because our meat doesn't have any additives or preservatives, it only lasts 36 hours. So once we slice it, we're not going to use it after 36 hours. So again, you know, we pride ourselves on our hand slicing everything and everything being natural, in addition to our delivery. And I don't want to say freaky fast, but Jimmy John's uses that tagline, so I guess I'll use it too. So does anyone have any questions?
No questions. Thank you for coming here and thank you for, you know, bringing Jimmy John's here. And you are famous for being fast.
That's what they said.
You know, and good. I'm going to give you credit for both fast and good. We've got a plaque here for you and wish you a lot of luck in the future.
Thank you.
Hope you're here for many years.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Marco's Pizza, Steve and Christine. Come on up.
So we didn't read the sign that said, "No food allowed."
That does a good thing.
We do have standards of how fast this should get to you, so I apologize if this is just like the outsider minutes from sitting and waiting. It should be to you faster and hotter than what you might try. So everyone, maybe one slice each. We brought three pizzas, so please feel free to try. Very excited to be here, appreciate it. This is our first Marco's Pizza, one of many. Marco's, for those who don't know, we are the fastest growing delivery pizza chain in the country. We should be over 1,000 pizza chains. It was started by an Italian-American named Pat Giammarco up in the Toledo, Ohio area. And all the dough is made fresh every single day. All the ingredients are very, very specific to his standards of an Italian-American. The tomatoes are actually his tomatoes. They're grown specifically for us. So these aren't just tomatoes we can go get at a market. We have to have specific ones. About our store, so very excited, we have about 28 to 30 young men and women who have started with us, six of which this is their very first job. So we're very excited about that. Six, not the exact same six, are from Indian Trail, so we're also very excited about that as well. So they're both local, about 26 of the 28 are either Monroe or Indian Trail. So we find that very exciting. So we hope you come see us. We're right next to Walmart. We're literally right next to Panera over on 74. And we just hope you enjoy our pizzas. The best pizza you will ever find from a delivery pizza chain.
Thank you so much. What did you bring?
So we got a deluxe, because, you know, we never know if someone's got gluten or whatever. But we got a deluxe, which is kind of like a vegetarian with a little bit of meat. We've got your pepperoni magnifico, which has lots of pepperoni on it, and I believe in all meat. And so the reason we brought that, we've actually watched how they're ordering around Indian Trail, and they seem to like the meat and the pepperoni a lot. So so far, that's been key. But we do have vegetarian, we do have subs, and we do have salads and wings and everything you would expect.
And I think something else we'd like to share with you is that, you know, one of the reasons why we decided to go on this path and why we opened Marco's Pizza, we happen to be parents with four boys, and four boys in the lot, and remember, one thing they like to eat is pizza. And so we decided that as we expanded our business, one of the things we wanted to do is something that we'd be proud of. And we loved the location because of the fact of how many family homes that were here. So that was one of the key factors of why we selected this location versus other locations that were offered to us, is we wanted to make sure that what we were doing was in line with what our values were, along with the company that we chose to partner with. So we're so excited to be a part of this town. We think it's just a great opportunity. And we did a friends and family, and the welcoming of the community was crazy. The amount of, I mean, people were walking up, "I have five kids. Can we get free pizza for five?" We're like, "We have four. You can have as much as you want." So it was so nice. The community's been extremely welcoming of us, so thank you so much for that. We really appreciate that.
Any questions?
Oh, I can testify because my wife brought home, I believe, a garden.
Oh, yes. That's my favorite.
She ate one of these, and I ate the rest.
It's totally healthy. It's guarded, right? It's totally fine.
I have one question. Is it eat-in and take-out, or is it more take-out than eat-in?
You can carry it out, and we don't have any seating. So carry out or deliver.
I remembered what was there before, and I didn't think it had seating there before.
Yeah, it's pretty small for seating. We need about 300 more square feet, but you can actually order on marcos.com or the app if you're going to go shop, take it up on the way home if you want it that way, or we'll deliver it to you as well.
Very good. Well, welcome to Indian Trail.
Thank you. We're happy to be here. Thank you.
How far is your delivery area?
So we can, it's pretty wide. We can go almost to CPC C, I believe is the college, is that the correct one, or SPC C? I guess right down to the south. All the way up Rogers Road, we can get all the Sun Valley Homes right out there to Potter Road. And then we can also stretch 74 to 45, all the way down to the apartment complex. I wish I knew which one it was, but that's like the end of our delivery area.
Is that home road?
No, that's a park.
You called it out right there.
But if you pick it up on the way home, we'll have it ready for you, I promise.
You promised.
It's in the corner.
Exactly. Totally fair. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
If they can't eat it all, please feel free to ask.
You know, I'm thinking, what are we going to do with this pizza? Not that we want it, but it's almost a shame you can't put it somewhere.
Dog food?
Where are you going to put it?
Why don't you put a table out?
Adam, you bought a land, all of it. That brings us to Citizen of the Quarter. Aleah and Crystal, I know you, come on up. We all know you here, and you both do so much for the town. And, you know, Mayor Alvarez is, and let me go ahead, this is a little late. Mayor Alvarez is not here tonight. And also Marcus is not here tonight. McIntyre, Councilmember Marcus, they both are sick. So sorry that they're both not here, and we'll get through tonight without, but anyway, Aleah, tell us, just give us about a minute or two minutes of some of the accomplishments. And I apologize for not knowing as well as the Mayor Alvarez.
Okay, well, my name is Aleah. I just graduated from Porterich High School. I was a senior, so classes 2019. Over the past few years, Mom and I have thrown charity events for different nonprofit organizations around the area. Back in 2018, we did one for Bright Blessings. We actually held it here in the Town Hall. And then we were able to raise over $1,800 in donations, as well as over 166 toys for the kids living in homeless shelters. And then this year, we did a fundraiser for Cindy's Hope Chest, a district nonprofit that helps with women who have breast cancer in their daily needs, and we were able to raise over $2,000 for them.
And that's just a few. I mean, you've done, but I don't know, we have all night. You've done a lot, and your mother's always a big help.
Those are two big ones.
I know you guys were instrumental in the adoption comp. I remember seeing you there, along with Michelle, and a lot of good things that you do for the town, and it's much appreciated. I have a question. Do we have a plaque? I think? I got two. Oh, they're down there. Anyway, congratulations and thank you for being who you are. And thank you for having a child that's not a child anymore, but a young lady that is such a wonderful and does such good things for the town. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Mr. Keith Adams is not here with Common Heart. Maybe we can do that at the next meeting. That brings us next to the new employee introductions. We have two new employees and two bright, smiley faces, and we're honored to have you here, and I'm glad you're with us. And I know you've got to be good at what you do because there are a whole lot of people that apply for those positions, and you're at the top. So anyway, Patrick, you want to say a few words? Well, first of all, Abby Ball, stand up. Abby's our communications director. And then Randy P. And, you know, I will say this, that Mike Parkes did a wonderful job for the time he was here. And I know you're going to do a fantastic job also. And also, the same thing about Rocks. I'm just, I'm thrilled that you guys are here working with us and go make Indian Trail an even better town than it already is. And I think it's a pretty good place to live. Patrick, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I'd just like to say that it was a tough competition. We had, for both Abby and Randy, we had about 372 applications. And Kaylee done a wonderful job going over all of them. And her and I, we kept going back and forth, back and forth, but I think they landed and they're very happy. I think they will complement the team 100%. We want to ask Abby and Randy just to share with us, you know, both your history background, where you come from, and...
All right, well, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm from Ohio originally, Cleveland area, just south of Cleveland. I worked for a communications agency for about 11 years. It was all focused on government communications, whether it was a city, municipality, school district, something like that. So I was kind of on the other side of it for the last 11 years, and I'm very excited to be here on this side of it. Very excited to be here and ready to work with the team to make Indian Town, Indian Trail, even better.
Good evening, Council. Pleased to be here as well. I come from Pensacola, Florida, where I served as Assistant Planning Services Administrator there with the city. My original experience and my career started with the city of Laurinburg. So I have a total of 15 years municipal planning experience, 10 of those was with the city of Laurinburg. My husband and I are both born and raised in North Carolina, so we're excited about being back in our home state and closer to family as well. So we have two daughters, age five and nine, and they are super excited to be here and just thankful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Indian Trail. Thank you.
All right, I would say welcome, welcome, welcome. I know you're, Abby, you haven't lived in, have you lived in the South before?
No.
No, okay, well, we're friendly. I'm saying you're not friendly up north, but we're friendly and we're a bunch of fine folks. And Ray, what part of North Carolina are you from?
Washington, North Carolina.
Washington.
East Carolina.
Okay, that's going to say east. Did you go to East Carolina by his hands?
No.
Okay, all right, well, welcome. And Patrick just told me that Raleigh, we've already said a bunch, where is Raleigh? All right, we've already said a whole bunch of good things about you, so I don't know if we can say anything else to criticize you. But we're glad you're here, and we're going to back up a little bit and have you come up and tell us about the artificial turf fields and let you know how much we appreciate what the Panthers have done for our town.
Sure. Well, first I would say my time management skills this evening, as well as my navigation skills severely flawed, so I apologize for any inconvenience that I've caused the Council. Abby, just embrace the humidity. That's just, embrace it. But yeah, behalf of the Carolina Panthers and the National Football League Foundation and the local initiative Support Corporation, we're so pleased to announce that Indian Trail is one of this year's grant recipients for the NFL Grassroots Field Project. It's a very competitive process. It's a nationwide process. And so the fantastic work that Patrick and his team put into their application was unanimously approved by the NFL Foundation and LISC. And so I think kudos go to Patrick and his team for the fantastic work and the broader vision of what the complex is going to do for Indian Trail and the services that it's going to provide to the residents of Indian Trail community and the broader Union County community. So it's with great pleasure that we're pleased to be part of the project. We're looking forward to the upcoming ribbon ceremony based on the aggressive timeline that Patrick's put together. It's an exciting timeline and knowing that that plan is going to, shovels are going in the dirt, and it's going to become a reality very soon so that it can get to work again serving children, families, and the community. And we're just, we could not be more pleased to be a small part of that effort.
Well, Raleigh, on behalf of the Town of Indian Trail, we are thrilled.
It's a big deal.
It is a tremendous deal, and it's not often that we receive a grant of such importance and so nice. And the nice thing about that is that's going to be there for a long time.
Correct. Well, it's a legacy project, and I think when you look at the bigger vision and the things that are coming in conjunction with that project, it's, the hope is that it's a small catalyst in part of a broader growth pattern that's going to serve the community.
I got the opportunity last year to go down to Walfer, and a friend of mine got me an on-field pass to, I was standing right next to the players watching them practice down there. That was a thrill, man. That was unreal. And the Panthers, people don't realize what the Panthers do and all the good things that you guys do in our community. I think it was something in the newspaper either today or yesterday.
Correct.
About all the good things that you guys do for the community, and I just can't tell you enough. Thank you, thank you, thank you for doing what you're doing. And, you know, anybody want to add anything to that?
Well, I'm curious, how many other communities have, in this area, have received a grant? Yeah, so in North and South Carolina, let's track this back, maybe the past 15 years, we've probably had eight successful grant applications. Out of coming out of our region, maybe as many as 60 to 70 over that time. And, you know, it's an intensive process, and I think, again, why I think it's a big deal is because it is competitive. It's nationally competitive, and you need the right ingredients, you need the right stakeholders, local stakeholders, to make the project a success. And I think that's all the more reason that we're really excited that this project's going to happen. Thank you.
David, I'd just like to mention that Raleigh told us there'll be a possibility that we could put the logo at two places on the field, so we're working on that. That's part of our budget too, so that's within our budget. And the exciting part too is that in September, after they come back from London, the entire team, probably some of them will come in and share the grant opening with us, with the cheerleaders, too, with some of the cheerleaders.
We're going to roll in hard, yes, full force. So that day, it's going to be exciting. So we're going to bring...
And it's my understanding now you're all going to bring the practice facility to this?
There was a news flash that came out, I think, last Wednesday. I meant to send you that memo. That piece of business is actually going to go down to Rock Hill. But we're all, it's still, we're, you know, regional by definition, and again, being able to partner with the Town of Indian Trail for this project is meaningful for us and look forward to working with Patrick and his team as the project comes to completion.
Thank you for all you do for us and everybody.
Thank you.
We have a couple plaques here.
One thing we wanted to do, also, we delayed the letter to Mr. Temper. We wanted Council to hand it to you, and we will mail another one to you, so if that's okay.
Perfectly fine, sir. My instructions to hand deliver this to Mr. Temper tomorrow, because I'll do it.
Can Patrick come up? Is that appropriate at all?
Chair. How do you want? Probably all you're going to put me down to the field twice.
That brings us to public comments. No, no, wait a minute. Oh, excuse me. Man, I'm sorry. It's all right, because we had to skip and go back up. Okay, I'm sorry. Next, we have the Monroe widening. Mr. Scott Cole, come up.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Town and Council, for having us here tonight, talking about an update on the Monroe Road widening and to try to dispel some of the issues that have surrounded that project. With me, I've got David Wasserman.
David, welcome. I didn't have your name on here. I apologize for...
That's okay. I can introduce you. David's our Western Regional STIP Program Manager. So for our 10-year State Transportation Improvement Program, he programs basically the Western part of the state. And I'm, of course, the Division Engineer here, so I represent your transportation system for a five-county area that includes Union County. So I have a presentation tonight, and I'd like to kind of deliver to you, if we could do that. I'm sorry, I thought you had it. We emailed it to you. I brought it on the way. Yeah. It's the middle one there, on the right. There's the middle of the, there's two of those. Yeah, there you go, there. And Adam, do I just kind of...
I'll give you the keyboard.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Thank you, Adam. Okay. So specifically, the bigger project, of course, is U 4714. That's all of the Omen Road Road widening. We're going to talk specifically about U 4714B, which is that portion of the project in the Town of Indian Trail. So we're going to review a little bit about the project history, talk about the reduced conflict intersections, formerly known as super street intersections. I'm going to talk about the issues that the town raised in a letter to me that was dated April 23rd of this year. And then we're going to talk about project status, and David's going to talk about funding decision and our path forward. So the project history, the project began, we started developing the project in 2013. And through a three-year process, which was our environmental analysis portion and project development, we signed an environmental analysis document in summer of 2016, when we began final design. The following fall, when we kind of buttoned up all the design elements, we updated our traffic operations analysis at the request of the towns along the corridor in March of last year. And in June of last year, we signed the FONZI. FONZI is an acronym, Finding of No Significant Impact, so that's basically a final approval of the environmental document. So we had proposed reduced conflict intersections along this corridor. Why? Because they reduce crashes, they reduce delay, we can use them to control speed, and they improve pedestrian safety and increase the number and frequency of pedestrian crossings. You know, we've reviewed these with most of you. I know we've got a few board members that may not have seen this, but left turns are generally our most unsafe movement, especially from the side street onto the main line, where you have all these, especially the crossing conflict points in the middle. In a standard intersection, there are 16 of those crossing conflict points of the 32 group conflict points, but in the reduced conflict intersection, there are a total of 14 conflict points, and only two of those are crossing conflict points. Again, the crossing conflict points are those that you experience that have the highest potential for injury and serious injury. So the reduced conflict intersection results in a major crash reduction, and this is something that the Department feels very passionate about, and something that we are responsible for. You know, when someone gets hurt on that roadways, we take it personally. And we are held responsible. The town doesn't jump up and say, "Hey, the town needs to do something about it." No, they say, "Hey, DOT needs to do something about this." And so we do take that personally. And we, you know, we, our families and our friends drive these roadways as well. In addition to the safety aspects from the RCI... conflict intersections, formerly known as super street intersections. Going to talk about the issues that the town raised in a letter to me that was dated April 23rd of this year. And then we're going to talk about project status. And David's going to talk about funding decision and our path forward. So the project history, the project began, we started developing the project in 2013. And through a three-year process, which was our environmental analysis portion and project development, we signed an environmental analysis document in summer of 2016, when we began final design. The following fall, when we kind of buttoned up all the design elements, we updated our traffic operations analysis at the requests of the towns along the corridor in March of last year. And in June of last year, we signed the FONZI. FONZI is an acronym, Finding of No Significant Impact. So that's basically a final approval of the environmental document. So we had proposed reduced conflict intersections along this corridor. Why? Because they reduce crashes, they reduce delay, we can use them to control speed, and they improve pedestrian safety and increase the number and frequency of pedestrian crossings. You know, we've reviewed these with most of you. I know we've got a few board members that may not have seen this, but left turns are generally our most unsafe movement, especially from the side street onto the main line, where you have all these, especially the crossing conflict points in the middle. In a standard intersection, there are 16 of those crossing conflict points of the 32 conflict points. But in the reduced conflict intersection, there are a total of 14 conflict points. And only two of those are crossing conflict points. Again, the crossing conflict points are those that you experience that have the highest potential for injury and serious injury. So the reduced conflict intersection results in a major crash reduction. And this is something that the Department feels very passionate about, and something that we are responsible for. You know, when someone gets hurt on that roadways, we take it personally. And we are held responsible. The town doesn't jump up and say, hey, the town needs to do something about it. No, they say, hey, DOT needs to do something about this. And so we do take that personally. And we, you know, we, our families and our friends drive these roadways as well. In addition to the safety aspects from the RCI, in a conventional intersection, you have what we typically call an eight-phase signal, meaning that you have two phases for each through movement in each direction. So the through movements in each direction, and then you add a protected left movements in each direction. And before you know it, you've divided that signal cycle into so many pieces that very few, if any of those movements, have adequate green time. Whereas with the RCI, you limit that phasing. Basically, you divide the movements between the main intersection and the U-turn points so that you have much more time to serve not only the main line, but also the side street through movements with additional time. Moving on to pedestrian bicycle safety, as I mentioned before, with all the conflict points of a standard intersection, with the way that we engineer and design the crossing for bicyclists and pedestrians, you have a greatly reduced number of conflict points for them. So it makes for a much safer crossing. In addition to that, we can signalize not only the main intersection, but the adjacent U-turn points. And for each one main intersection, we can have three crossing points, very safe crossing points. So moving on to the project in question. So you recall from our previous discussions that U-4714B was divided into multiple segments. It started at Trade Street in downtown Matthews, went through Matthews, Stallings, and Indian Trail. So you can see these segments here, and I'm sure you've seen in the news and in your discussions with Matthews, have heard that they have chosen to withdraw their timing, the timing of the AA project within the Town of Matthews. They didn't have any funding in it themselves. But they have a lot of projects going on in and around Matthews. And so before we widened Oleman Road, John Street through Matthews, they wanted to see what happened with traffic once 74 was widened and the signals were taken out, once 485 was widened, so that they could preserve some of the character right in the center of their town. So that portion of the project has been delayed. The AB portion, the 485 interchange that you see here, that is actually included with the 485 construction, okay? That 485 project is a design-build project that is under contract right now. And we're going to be doing a meet the design-build team, public meeting later this month, and kick off that 485 construction in July, actually. So that's going to be coming very soon. And so that interchange project, because it affected the interstate, it made sense to include it in that project. And so we did. The third segment is the AC segment, and that is the 485 to Morningside Meadow Drive. That's basically the town limits of where Stallings and Indian Trail meet. And then, of course, what we are here to mainly talk about tonight is the B segment, Morningside Meadow Lane to Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. So I know through the process that you all have been contacted by multiple residents and probably developers, business owners along the corridor. And we have worked with those folks through the issues that they've brought up. Mr. Kilo, I think he was a former councilman and possibly mayor of Indian Trail. And Ms. Jones, I know she's been in contact with you folks. We moved and relocated the road to accommodate them better, moved U-turn bulbs. Mr. Kilo, we removed one of the U-turn bulbs on his frontage. There was, it was a little bit redundant, so we could do that. We moved one out in front of Ms. Jones's house. She actually owns the parcel next to her house. So it's still on the parcel next to her house, but at least it's not in front of her house. We've worked with Mr. Brewer, Brewer Henley. He has multiple gas stations in and through Indian Trail and Stallings. And Dennis Moser, developer of the Stone Theaters and the surrounding property there. So we've worked closely with these folks to locate and relocate some of the elements of the design. And that's one of the beauties of this design, to preserve Mr. Kilo's old home place, some residences, businesses, and future commercial properties. One of the other design changes that we made and that we've heard through the process was at Brandon Oaks Parkway. Everybody comes out of Brandon Oaks Parkway and turns left and goes towards Charlotte. And so we redesigned Brandon Oaks Parkway such that, such that folks coming out of Brandon Oaks Parkway will have the double left turns coming out of their neighborhood, immediately turn left onto Oleman Road. This is what we call a reverse RCI, okay? So instead of lefts in, it allows for lefts out. Now, you can't make a left directly into the subdivision there. You go past the main entrance, down to a U-turn point, do a U-turn there, and come back in. That movement is minor movement here. Most of the left-turning traffic coming from like Harris Teeter Shopping Center, Stone Theaters, that direction, turns left on the Mustang Drive to enter the Brandon Oaks neighborhood. So we have made that change as requested by the residents there and to help accommodate some of the basic movements, help to better accommodate the predominant movements there. So regarding the letter that came from the town, the town passed a bond in 2011 to accelerate the project. And they, you objected in the letter to lack of acceleration and perceived project delays. David's going to talk about that in more detail. The funding that you did put on the project initially did help us get it into the stip and get the project started. And we have not, since we originally programmed the project, the only delay that we have implemented is a recent delay of one year to construction. We went from 2021 construction to 2022 construction. And that time is actually needed to complete the right-of-way acquisition and relocate utilities. That has to be done before construction can begin. We've got about 175 parcels from 485 all the way through Stallings and Indian Trail to acquire. And then we've got to relocate the utilities, the poles, the gas lines, basically everything, so that the road can be rebuilt. Indian Trail was not funding projects in other towns. So Indian Trail's portion, the money that you committed is for the B portion, and that is strictly within the Town of Indian Trail. That is not, does not even touch another town. So that is not correct. We are not asking Indian Trail or not using Indian Trail's money in another town. Be strictly on the B portion in the Town of Indian Trail. Indian Trail portion is moved to the final phase in 2026. That is not correct either. We are moving forward. Our plan is to move forward with the Indian Trail portion, and as I said, construct in 2022 with the Stallings portion. So from 485 out, construct those two pieces together. Improvements are not conventional. Well, yes, our reduced conflict intersections, they are not conventional. But the median is conventional, the additional lanes are conventional. And basically, you know, we don't build five-lane sections anymore. And so when you have the median, you've got to have a place. When you come out of a side street or a driveway, you've got to have a place to turn around. And that's what the RCI design basically provides for. And NCDOT's approval of Matthews delay. Yes, we did approve Matthews delay because our analysis was that most of the traffic is not in the Town of Matthews, but outside of the 485 loop. And so we're preserving the piece. There's actually a piece outside of 485 that is in the Town of Matthews. And we're moving forward with that piece, as well as the Stallings piece, to get residents from Indian Trail and beyond to and from 485 more quickly and efficiently. Oh, goodness. Let's see what I do. There we go. Okay, so additional issues, NCDOT's approval of Stallings changed. So Stallings did request a change at Potter slash Stallings Road. And we worked with them because they had a small area plan that they had developed in 2007. And we weren't aware of that plan when we started developing the project. In addition to that, they intend to have their town center along the route, right there at Stallings slash Potter Road. We could accommodate the design change with the existing routes that they have already in place, and will preserve expensive properties that we would have had to take all of, like the McDonald's slash Sitco, I think it is. That's right there on the corner. It's one of the Brewer Henley properties, actually. So the performance of that intersection, we analyzed it, and it was comparable to what we were doing with the RCIs along the rest of the corridor. And we preserved the RCIs along the rest of the corridor in the Town of Stallings as well. There are unanticipated project impacts to businesses. Well, when you widen a road, there are, you basically take land to put the road on. And there are impacts to businesses and homes along the route. And that's kind of the nature of a public works project, is that you have to take some land on which to do the public works project. And widening of Oleman Road is no different. As I mentioned before, we have worked with a lot of the businesses and the commercial properties that are developing along the corridor to minimize those impacts. Increase of the project cost with no ascertainable benefit to Indian Trail. So the project cost has increased. David will tell you that most of our projects increase in cost as we get closer to the finish line because we have a better idea. We can better estimate those costs as we finalize our designs. And so we have a more complete cost estimate, not only for the right-of-way, but also for the construction. Although our costs have increased, costs to the Town of Indian Trail, the commitment that you made for $10 million has not increased. We are not asking more than the $10 million from Indian Trail. Expected prolonged congestion and its impact to residents. It does take a while, as you can tell, for these projects to develop. I know the town is working to develop projects. I know Todd has been working on a roundabout at Stallings, excuse me, Sardis Road, and Sardis Church Road and Union Village Indian Trail. And it's no easy feat to get one of these projects done. And so you multiply that by five miles worth, and it is a monumental project. But there will be congestion, congestion during construction, and that is unavoidable. We will be, when we build the road, we will be limiting lane closures to nighttime lane closures to try to minimize some of those impacts, because we know that it's difficult during daytime hours and all the traffic volume that's out there. Negative financial impacts as a result of adjustments, delays, and changes. Yes, the project cost has gone up once again. But again, the town, I understand, you know, had a bond. But my understanding is that the town has not sold bonds yet. So it's not like you were holding, you know, sold bonds and were holding and paying interest on those bonds while we finalized the project. So again, there's no additional costs or impacts to costs from the town. Where we are with the project, talked about where, you know, we completed all the environmental documents. And we've completed the design for the entire project, all those segments that we mentioned. And we are ready to begin right-of-way acquisition immediately. We have completed design, ready to begin right-of-way acquisition. Once we get the right-of-way acquisition complete in about 18 months, we'll begin utility relocation immediately thereafter and followed with construction. So moving on to current funding, I'll switch over to David. Well, good evening. I'm David Wasserman. I'm from the STIP unit in Raleigh. And basically, my job is to take projects that you all work with the MPO, CRTPO, Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and Scott's Division 10. We take those projects. They are evaluated through a prioritization process, or they come selected from the MPO. And then we plan the funding and the schedules and develop, and the results ultimately end up in the STIP, the State Transportation Program. And so I'm going to speak on this project from a funding perspective. So as Scott mentioned, the AA section, which is up in Matthews, they agreed to look at moving the right-of-way back to 2025 and construction 27. As Scott talked to you about, AB's under construction. AC and B section, again, the B section is here in Indian Trail. The current schedule, as Scott just mentioned, is in 19 for right-of-way with construction in '22. However, we did receive your letter recently by Scott that says you'd like to withdraw the $10 million allocated to this project. Fortunately, that complicates the issue because we don't have $10 million to plug that hole. And we'll talk about that in a second. So just a little bit from a project history perspective, the first, prior to the 2016-2025 STIP, the State Transportation Program, the B section was unfunded. In other words, it was in the stip, but basically didn't have any money to it. So in 2016, or it was actually 2015 when it was released, you all working with the MPO came to us and said, you know, we're going to put the $10 million, give you a $10 million contribution. And that money went towards right-of-way acquisition in 2022. At the time, you could see the cost of the project was about $31 million. But you note that construction was not funded at the time. It was just looking purely at right-of-way acquisition. And real quick, then, we'll speak to STBG-DA funds. Those essentially are funds that go to Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, that regional transportation body here that works with DOT and making planning, this transportation planning decisions. So they are allocated a set amount of money each year, and they contribute funds towards, about $21 million in funds towards right-of-way acquisition. So fast forward two years, the cost has increased as we've learned more, a lot about the project. But you can see, we have accelerated right-of-way acquisition to 2019. And this point, we've also added construction as well. And so here, construction was initially planned for 2021. But again, the total amount of, the total funding was from essentially the CRTPO's funding pot, along with your $10 million contribution. So then, what the MPO said is we'd like to submit this project through the State Transportation Project Priorization Process. Now, it's the STI prioritization process where projects are all evaluated based on a combination of quantitative data, such as congestion, safety, along with local input. So the MPO provide, and the Division provide local input priorities for writing of the project to DOT. And we evaluate these projects all across state. We're talking of neighborhoods about 1,200 highway projects all across state. And so this project scored really well. It was the highest project for this area, what's known as the Division Needs Bucket. And so being that it scored really well, essentially that meant that we could use the state prioritization funds, the STI funds, and not have to use CRTPO, the MPO's dollars. So that was removed from the project. But however, we still had your $10 million local contribution. As you can see, the cost has still stayed about the same. So at this point, we, in working with Scott and his folks, we also agreed to shift construction back a year to make sure that they have adequate time to acquire all the land needed for the project, along with relocate the utilities. Scott mentioned there's a lot of utility conflicts along this corridor. So that's one of the reasons for the delay. But the end result, whether you begin construction in 2021 or '22, the completion date of the product's roughly going to be the same, just a matter of when you actually officially begin construction. Just do it, and I say that due to the utility conflicts that often push back construction. So really, what's next? We also have a policy in place with the STI process, and it just went to effect with this latest round, where anytime a project that has a local contribution, whenever that money is withdrawn, we flag it, we review it, because that's a major issue for us. And so we're working with the MPO on how to fill that $10 million gap. We presented them a couple of different options. The first was, you know, basically, you pull $10 million out, let's look at finding $10 million from another project. However, we just can't pull $10 million from the area. If it comes from another project, it likely means we have to delay that another project. And it could be a locally selected project through that pot that goes through the MPO, or it can be a project that goes through the prioritization process, but it's got to be within this area. Or the other option that we presented to the MPO is, you know what, we can delay this project, the Oleman Road segment within Indian Trail, essentially back six years, the '26 for right-of-way and construction in 2028, which means it has to go back through the prioritization process and be rescored. It will likely continue to score well due to the traffic and safety issues. to the traffic and safety issues out there, but there's always a chance that it could fall out based on other higher priority needs in the area. So a third option is what we're here to really talk about tonight is the option to recommit those $10 million that you initially agreed to commit for the project. As Scott mentioned, if that is the case, right-of-way acquisition will begin here in the coming months, construction being 2022. And then, as a bonus, the state would give you back $5 million, and with those bonus allocation funds, to be spent on another project within your area. And so that project, within five years, once construction has begun. However, the one catch with all this is we need a decision, we need to, we need a decision in the near future, because we are producing our final 2020-2029 State Transportation Program here in a couple of months, and we need to know essentially by the end of this month or work if we're going to be including that $10 million contribution. If not, essentially, we're going to defer to the MPO and what they're, how they'd like to proceed, and based on conversations with their staff, it's looking like we'd be looking at likely a six-year delay for this project. So unfortunately, there's not, we just can't pull the $10 million out of the air and substitute it for that local contribution. So we are left with some tough choices. So that's all I have. Scott and I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll start. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming before council and town tonight to speak to us about this project. One of the questions that I had was the breakdown of section AA, AB, AC, BM. AA is delayed. That's the Matthews side on the other side of 485. How much is that project, how much is funded right now for that section of that project?
That project is in, like I said, 25 for right-of-way, and roughly that's, roughly about $21, $22 million right now for right-of-way, and then construction, have to give me a minute here, do some math, I'm going to say roughly about $20 million or so for construction.
Twenty million, $21 million for right-of-way and $20 million for...
Rough numbers.
Okay. So about $40 million-ish.
Sure.
The question is, what's, that money was in the present STIP, the present funding, but they delayed it to 2026. Where did those dollars go?
A lot of those dollars were essentially the MPO's dollars. They basically, and they've decided to allocate, you know, they're working on a project part, product selection process where they're allocating those to other projects in the area. Any of the state dollars on that project, they've been essentially used up in cost increases. We've had many, many cost increases over the last year for projects all across the state. Just to give you an idea, over the last six months, or actually less than, yeah, roughly the last six months, $900 million or so of cost increases all across the state. And so in this area, we've had substantial, we have to have probably substantial cost increases as well. So we've had to allocate those funds to deal with those cost increases.
And did I hear $40 million was returned back to the MPO?
It wasn't returned back. It was just, the money was just shifted. So essentially, you know, if we had money in the first, the first couple of years of the program, and so they had funding in 19, 20, 22, 23, that money has been shifted back for the AA section. And they're filling that those funds with other projects in the area that they selected.
And who has selected those? Are those projects already been selected?
Yeah, they're working their way through the MPO, yes.
So is there a possibility that Monroe Road, section B, could, that some of that money could be used for section B? If CARPO, the MPO deemed that was acceptable?
That is up to the MPO to, at this point, they have not given any indication that they're willing, that that's something they want to do. It was one of the options we presented, essentially finding $10 million, and that could be from a locally selected project. But again, they've allocated those funds to other projects in the area. They're allocating, the process of allocating those funds to other projects in the area.
Well, you know, when the final decision by MPO, by CARPO, for that allocation has to be, you know, completed by...
I believe they're working on it. They're talking about it this month, and then I think they're making the decision here in July. That's my understanding. We could get, fight out, get confirmation, but I believe that's what the plan is.
So they have until July to decide where to use that money, but we have till the end of June, as far as CARPO goes, to decide where we're going to get the funds?
Correct. They are very, yes, just because we need to work on finalizing the State Transportation Program.
Excuse me, if I may. Another question I have is that I received the CARPO agenda today, and I was reading through the, regarding the STBG funds exchange, and that's with those CMAC dollars that are becoming available. Is there a possibility that any of that money could be swapped and benefit section B of Monroe Road?
Those funds, that's, the funding swap you're referring to is for a specific project that funds are being, different types of federal funds are being swapped so they can be utilized in the best place available. So for example, that funding swap that you're referring to is to begin with the I-77 Hardened Shoulders project you mentioned about. And so they are just, you can only use certain CMAC funds on certain types of projects. And so the state is working with the MPO on applying those funds where they can best be utilized, based on the federal restrictions.
But it's not limited to that, if I understand correctly. That's just been a recommendation?
CMAC funds cannot be used for this Oldman Road widening project.
But they could be transferred to another project, and those funds could possibly go to Monroe Road.
This, the CMAC fund, I mean, that is a specific funding swap that is being worked out for the, for the I-77 Hardened Shoulders project. So I don't, I don't think there's really any flexibility there with moving some of the DA dollars or CMAC funds for this project.
I think that's part of the frustration, is trying to figure out where these funds are available and where they can be applied. And unfortunately, I'm really new to CARPO, I've been there eighteen months, but I'm learning quickly some of these buckets, they, of money. I'm, you know, I'm at, Indian Trail's at a disadvantage because we don't know what I call the shell game. It's not necessarily a shell game, but, you know, here's some money, here's some money, you can apply it, or we can swap it with this, until we're late into the game. And I personally feel like we are, we've written letters of concern. Now we're here in June. We've got to make a decision by June, and I feel, I feel like we're pushed against the wall on this. You know, in good faith, we did a bond, and the bond expired. And then, and also in good faith with DOT, hoping to get some design concessions, you know, we extended that bond. And it's very frustrating, at least for me personally, to know that we need to put a $10 million deposit on a project that's still being delayed and delayed. And I understand and say, well, it shouldn't be delayed out past 2024, 2020, it should be open up in 2024. But if a recession comes next year, and you've got our $10 million, and the road becomes, oh, we've got a funding shortage, it's going to be pushed back yet again. These things are concerning for the guy that's putting in, putting in money into the project.
So I understand that. You know, understand that the only, the only delay that we've had so far, since we initially programmed this project in 2016, has been one year, from '21 to '22 for construction. And yes, as David mentioned, we've got 1,200 projects roughly statewide. We're going to hold the schedule to the maximum extent possible of a project that the town has committed funds for, because we want to honor that commitment as well. We've done all we could to hold our schedule to the maximum extent possible, and we'll continue to do that. We have some flexibility with the other projects. But, you know, if we have your commitment, we'll also commit to do our best to hold that schedule as high as possible.
But you said you do your best. I'm sure you said that from the very beginning, you do your best. I think some of the questions that I have, one of them is, why, why Indian Trail? Why, why, why is it necessary that Indian Trail give you, give $10 million for Stallings and Matthews didn't contribute like Indian Trail did? And, you know, the bond was done, and I've been on the council longer than anybody else. I've been here almost eight years, and it was done before I came. But it was understood that the $10 million would speed up the process, that we'd get this sped up, that, you know, maybe 2016 or so, we'd have a, we'd get a road out there. It didn't happen. You know, so our $10 million went towards good faith in the DOT, saying, we're going to speed this process up. What happened to the fact that it was the, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was the number two road in the state at that time, I think, listed as need in getting, getting why, it was a very important, it was congested, and then, no offense, politics get involved, and then all of a sudden, we get kicked out of the hopper, and it goes back in again, and we're not number two anymore. And, you know, it's like Jerry says, it's kind of like playing a shell game. But, but we are responsible for taxpayers' money. And listen, I've been a big proponent of the DOT. You guys are, do a heck of a job. But it kind of feels like that we, and I'm just saying, it feels like we've got the runaround. We're still, we're paying something, or we're the only contributors to this road, and we asked that it be a four-lane. Did we get a four-lane? No, we didn't get a four-lane. But that's okay. We're still putting in our $10 million. But the majority of the people wanted a four-lane. So we bypassed that part of it. So what happened to just, why don't we just look at how bad that road, go get on that road at five o'clock in the afternoon and sit in traffic for an hour? Well, we all know that road needs to be, what needs to be done with it. Why not just do it? Why do we have to go through all this mumbo jumbo? And again, to get something that needs to be done. And, you know, let's face it, touch on it again, we thought we were going to get, we thought that $10 million was going to speed up the process. Scott, you went and go buy a house, and they said, listen, I'm going to buy this house, but I tell you what, if you give me, the contractor says, if you can give me so much money upfront, we'll get that house built, built in a lot quicker time. And then it doesn't get built. It doesn't get done, it doesn't get done, it gets done. And you can compare that to a lot of different things. You're not going to be real happy about it. And neither are the residents of Indian Trail. They're not real happy about it. And...
I do understand that. I do understand that. But do understand that we have a process, federal law, state law, that we have to go through before we take people's land and build a road. Okay? It is a lengthy process, granted. We're doing what we can to accelerate. We did not take your money and say, to give me your $10 million, and we'll run with it. Right? You still have your $10 million. We haven't taken a dime, and we have, you haven't been charged a dime of interest at this point.
I haven't done anything either, but that's okay.
Well, we are ready to do something.
Right.
And now the road gets pulled out from under us. Okay? And, and when a locality commits $10 million and then says, we, well, you know, now that it's time for us to spend our money, we're not going to spend it. We're going to, we're going to uncommit that money. Then the department, you know, we're stuck with saying, you know, if we can't, we don't have the authority to go pull from another town's, a project through another town, nor do we, nor is it good business practice to say, okay, Indian Trail, that's fine, don't worry about it. We'll fill your money with somebody else's project and go build it. What does that tell all the other municipalities that have committed to projects across the state? That their money doesn't count, and they can pull it out any time?
Well, that's true. It also goes back to, we'll speed the process up if you give us the, if you're going to give us $10 million. So I mean, we go in that circle, round and round, round, round. You said something interesting a while ago, when you flagged money when it's withdrawn, but did you, did you speed it up when we said, when we said we were going to give you $10 million? How did that expediate things? It didn't, it went backwards?
Well, and I actually said the opposite. It actually went forward. It went forward quite a bit. You know, if you recall, that, before the $10 million was committed, this section within Indian Trail was unfunded. And now, when it's committed, it moves up to, I believe, right-of-way since '22 at that point. And then, two years later, the project moved up from right-of-way acquisition even further to 19, because of that $10 million commitment. And then we added, we funded construction, you know, the MPO decided to put their money on construction. And then again, realized the, again, the only delay has been shifting construction back one year. But between those two cycles, the end result would still be the same. The opening, the traffic date would still be the same. It's just a matter of physically wanting to be in construction. So we have accelerated this project several years because of that $10 million commitment.
Last question I'll ask is, is, okay, so Indian Trail gave you $10 million, and no, I mean no offense to this question, to the town, or to the people of Indian Trail, but were they just gullible? Were they just gullible to give you $10 million? Stallings didn't give you anything. Matthews didn't give you anything. I mean, I understand, I know what you're going to tell me, but this project wasn't funded and...
No, NC DOT did not go to the people of Indian Trail and say, please approve this bond for $10 million. Right?
They didn't say that, but they said we'd speed it up. We'll get you, you won't have to sit in traffic as long as we, if you get that $10 million.
So the town could have taken their $10 million and built their own project. Right? On DOT's facility, we would have approved a project. But understand, this is now a, what, a $60, $80 million project, so you would have built three-quarter mile. Okay? Well, that's going to get you from one place in Indian Trail to another place in Indian Trail, but not going to get you to 485. So that's where your money was leveraging the bigger pots of money, going to allow us to move toward a bigger project.
That still doesn't answer why the other municipalities are getting their job done with no money. I mean, I, I mean, that doesn't answer, that, that got to leave you scratching your head a little bit. You know, that, that part is, you know, and that's what we don't, that, so, I'm at loss for words.
I will say, I mean, that I certainly understand where you're coming from with that question. Just from a historical perspective, those other sections were funded prior to the $10 million contribution. So those projects, those sections were moving ahead, and then this section, Indian Trail, was not. And so the jumpstart for the Indian Trail section was the $10 million.
So this is quite a question or a comment. After one of the CARPO meetings, I spoke with Van. One of the things that concerned me is the comment made when I said, you know, Indian Trail put up $10 million, or said they were going to put $10 million. The comment was made that, well, that policy, doing that, pulling $10 million and putting it on a project, is being reviewed by legal within DOT, that it's being, and I took that, and maybe Councilman Head, he was there with me, and said, that, that practice is frowned upon. Well, if it's frowned upon, why are you still continuing to take that money? And are these, is this a pay-to-play kind of a situation where...
Well, I mean, it takes money to build it. It's not a pay-to-play in that you're not a private entity. I mean, these are both government entities. Right? We're not aware of any legal issues. As a matter of fact, this current legislation that funds our program encourages local participation and provides information, provides the statute for the bonus allocation, the $5 million rebate for another project. I mean, it's clearly written there in the legislation.
So I'm just repeating what I was told, and maybe that's bad or misinformation or whatever.
I heard the same thing, because during that time, you know, Jerry asked, what if? That was, that was the way it came across. And I actually went over and got Van's card, and we went back to it. And that was his comment. I've got a question. How many other I've got a question, how many other, 2011, how many other municipalities have put up ten million dollars to get their projects?
I mean, I will say, that is one of the largest amounts that's been put forward. There are several other towns who have put up money and/or have agreed to put tolls on a project, and that's really what counts, and that helps increase the score from a prioritization perspective. And then it also returns that money back to the area. I'd have to go specifically look to see how, whether amounts there are in terms of greater, around ten million dollars or more, but I can certainly tell you, ten million dollars is on the higher end there.
Yeah, I was going to say, based on those initial estimates, you know, thirty million dollars and a ten million dollar local contribution, I mean, I guess DOT would be nuts to walk away from that.
It is significant, significantly, no question.
Also, I did a little bit of research, I noticed that the bond, yes, we passed it in 2011. I saw an article, the Charlotte Observer paper, they had an interview with the previous town manager, Mr. Fibas, and he was quoted in the paper as saying this road was supposed to be open by 2018. So I'm kind of curious where that information came from. And also, was there ever a contract? I mean, you know, it's one thing for me to say, hey, I'll give you fifty thousand dollars to start on my house over here, would you start on it without a contract from me guaranteeing that fifty thousand dollars?
So no, so the comment from Mr. Fibas was made on Mr. Fibas's own cognizance. I mean, without knowledge of the process, I'll have to say. But I will also say that, no, there was not a contract. We typically enter into a contract about a year before we go to construction. However, if the town wants to move forward with putting the bond on Rideaway, we can move forward now with a contract, we call it a municipal agreement. It's basically an agreement with the department and the town that would put in the terms of that transfer.
So that's why I'm questioning, there's no contract, but the ten million dollars needs to happen right now for the Rideaway acquisition?
So the commitments always been there from the town since we started the project. We're not asking for a check for ten million dollars by the thirtieth of June. We're asking for the commitment to be recommitted.
When are you asking for the ten million?
Well, you've told me that it can't wait till 2022, and I'm telling you that we can begin right away immediately. So when the town, if you recommit, then we'll work out the details with your town manager about the term that you need to get the bond sold, and we'll initiate a contract to...
Yeah, I'm not very well-versed in municipality contracts. I just know in our private sector, we have milestones, whenever we take any project, we have a deposit. And then once you have your design phase, and construction phase, and startup phase, it's different than what you guys have, there's milestones, twenty percent, twenty percent, whatever.
So we don't typically enter into a contract until the town is participating in the cost or there's a cost share for that particular phase of the project?
If this project is delayed in Indian Trail, what are the overall costs to DOT and CARPO in estimated increased costs? You know, we've had the environmental study done, you've done the design, so that won't change, but you will need to revisit the environmental study, I imagine. There's a cost associated with that, and then with the delay, it's going to be additional cost of Rideaway, additional cost of construction.
So exactly, exactly, so...
Wouldn't it be in the best interest to try to help us figure out a solution to make this happen? So that we all don't suffer?
And that's why we're here, to dispel any misinformation, to try to give you all the information that you have to make a good decision. And yes, we can work through the fine points of the details with you. But, you know, we'll have to, we have to get to a point of commitment as to where we are with that.
I have to smile, because when you say, will you help us make a good decision? There's only one good decision for you, and that's to give you ten million dollars. That, I mean, that's...
Well, that's been the decision up to this point, right? That's been the town's decision up to this point, what the town committed to, I understand.
And so we've been operating under that premise?
Let's go back, let's go back to the conversation that Van had with Councilman Morris and myself. One of the determining factors of all this was that discussion. And that discussion said, we're not sure what's going to happen because it's illegal. And he did say illegal, in the legal department, I will say he came out and said exactly these words, but it was like a, almost like a bribe, you know, it's almost like back money. And the only reason why it would go through legal is there was something amiss with how this money was being, how this money was being bribed. Why would there, I guess, I guess I'm going to, let me finish my question.
Okay.
So I want to go back and understand what happened when this information went to legal? What was the determination? Because that was, that was, he said it was going to legal.
I can only suspect that Van has never had a town commit to ten million dollars for a project and then uncommit ten million dollars for a project, so what do we do next? So what do we do next?
But it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't presented in that way. It was presented in a way that any municipality, it was a general comment, it wasn't...
I'll tell you specifically, Ben, there is nothing under the table here. We are all in a public forum, that's why we're not meeting in some closed session behind closed doors somewhere. This is all above board. There is nothing to be hidden here.
And Van is my direct supervisor, and so I've spoken several times about this, including today. He has never mentioned me from a legal aspect, so not quite sure, you know, what specifically he's referring to.
I guess you could ask, I mean, that'd be logical to ask him, you know, what did he mean by that? You know, and that'd be, that'd be a good answer, you know, give us a good answer.
We'll provide a response to Patrick in writing for him to share with you all.
I have a few questions, but more on the technical side, I'm sorry. Was the project identified to be improved in 2011? Was it rated in 2011? Because I remember this is when the town was willing to put, come up with the money and put it on, put it in a referendum for people to vote on it. So one more question again, was it identified in 2011 to be improved to four lane roadway?
It was identified as a future need, but it did not have funding in 2011. So that's why I say, you know, it was identified in our, I think it's our 2011 STIP, or STFE, but it was unfunded, there was no funding for it.
And so, I'm understanding, typically, we do a new STIP every two years, okay? In 2013, the law changed that allowed for these bonus allocations, encouraged towns to participate in the cost of transportation, and changed the way we prioritize projects. That happened in 2013, June of 2013. So we had to initiate that process and get a new STIP underway. And so after 2011, the first STIP was not generated and subject to approval until 2015.
Well, I'm trying to go with that, Scott, if it was identified 2011, 2013, we're in 2019 right now, and if we delay this project, we don't, if we don't pay the ten million, we delay this project in 2028, when we do it, DIA, we increase the growth rate like three percent to four percent sometimes. So all these years, you know, congestion is getting worse and worse and worse. So whether it's completed in 2025, but look how many years passed so far. So our residents and the congestion is getting worse and worse every day. And the shocking part of it is, let's say we have a tornado, we have an emergency, and we have to use that ten million dollars, and we can't come up with it. So what is going to happen to that congestion that continued to decrease? It's just a technical question, and it's like, the more you delay, the more we're going to suffer out there. And that's the big concern to us.
So certainly, there are a lot of future needs in our plan. I mean, you know, a lot of things, well, yeah, we'd love to do that if we had the money. It's a future need, it's out beyond our ten years. It's not, nothing that we can afford today, and that's where this project was in our plan in 2011. We cannot move forward on design, Rideaway, anything with the project until we have a funded project, right? We have to have, we have to know the money's in place to move forward. And that's what happened in 2015, and we've moved forward ever since then. But in 2011, in our plan, it was unfunded.
But somebody decided that some improvements need to occur to that project at that time?
It was a line on a piece of paper.
Another question for you, the funding for the Matthews part. I know, Scott, you're over the county that has, I don't know how many counties, so it's the same thing throughout North Carolina. Why don't you keep that money geographically here, Indian, border, Mecklenburg County? If that money's not used by Matthews, why do you have to shift it to another county, somewhere else in North Carolina to cover another project? It's all about geographical, so that's, how does it work? Can you explain that to me?
That money does actually stay within Scott's division. It's just, in this case, as I mentioned, we have a lot of cost increases, and so that money has gone to those other projects that are already in the pipeline, that are about to go to construction, where we've had those cost increases.
So when we get the credit, Matthews says, well, we don't want to build a project this year. We can't, you know, we don't put the money in a bank and sit on it. You know, this is taxpayers' money, it needs to be building roads. So it goes to the next project that needs the money, and immediately is included in the needs for that project to build roads.
Next question, what would happen, Scott, if you end up not having the entire money for the project, DOT? You short ten million dollars, what would you do there if you get into construction and all that? Like the same situation where we have?
So, right, just like at home, you know, if you don't have money for, to fix the water heater, right? You wait, if you're making money, if you're working, if you're fortunate enough to be working, you work until you save enough money to fix it. And that's kind of what we would be in our program. You know, the revenues that we get from gas tax, from user fees, licenses, taxes, tags, associated with vehicles, eventually we pay for the project. But it'd be a delay delivery.
Yes, if you run into any issues after the Scottville State acquisition, something happened to the economy, and you're in the middle of construction, and something comes up, what do you do? Do you go find money from another pocket somewhere to bail out the project? Just if something like that happened, what do you do?
You know, I'm not aware of any project that we've ever had to suspend because DOT ran out of money during construction. You know, we try to make sure, when we enter into a contract, it's, you know, it's a complete contract.
And that might mean if we start to enter a contract and we need to fulfill it, but it might mean we have to delay something else in order to fulfill that, the cost increases.
That's what I'm, I don't get the money from somewhere, so something else is going to be delayed.
Correct, and that's the very question we're putting in front of you, or within CARPO as well.
One other question, as far as when the construction actually happens on Monroe Road, you're going to be four lanes, whatever configuration, all the way up until the Stallings Indian Trail line. Theoretically, if we do not contribute the ten million, and this gets postponed, you're going to build it up to that point and stop.
Basically.
And it's going to cost a lot more money to mobilize all that equipment and to start up another section of the project at a later date. But my question is, is once you do a four lane to there, you've now got a pinch point, a two lane coming right out of there. So everyone in the morning who lives in Indian Trail, in Wesley Chapel, in Monroe, who travel that road, it's not just Indian Trail, just, I need to stress that. It is a lot of other municipalities that access it. When they start piling towards Charlotte on Monroe Road, which will be two lane until they get to that four lane, and then it's going to open up, and theoretically, they're all going to blast off. In the evenings, when they're returning from 485, and they get to the pinch point right there in Stallings, how well is that going to treat Stallings traffic at that point when you've gone from four down to two? What is that going to do? As a safety concern as well.
Just as you said, it's going to be a pinch point, right? It's going to be a bottleneck.
But it kind of appears that it might be more of a bottleneck for their residents than ours. We're all leaving on two lanes going into four lanes, and that...
Their residents will be home, basically. That they'll turn on Stallings Indian Trail, Stallings Potter Road, they'll turn off on other roads, and they'll be home.
So if Monroe Road does get delayed in Indian Trail's municipality, what happens to the intersection at White Cell Indian Trail Road that's already an F and Monroe Road? What happens to those intersections?
Nothing.
I think that's a lot of our frustration, is a lot of the projects that have been and around Indian Trail and Indian County, they go to the bottom. And it seems like the only way to get them to come to the top is not only pay our gas taxes, not only pay those taxes, but to go ahead and dig a little deeper and pay it a little bit more. That's a frustrating position to be in. Because that ten million dollars, we could actually use to pay every street we have in Indian Trail that's an Indian Trail road, and possibly even take over some DOT streets. But it's one thing to pay for your own roads, and then to also go and pay for the state roads as well. It's, that's a tough one.
To put it plainly, had Indian Trail never committed ten million dollars? We'd be moving right along, but the...
What do you mean by that?
So you put your money in, you took your money out, okay? We had, we would have programmed with everything else and would have been moving forward, but you took your money out, so now we've got a ten million dollar hole. How do you fill a ten million dollar hole? Well, the ten million dollars has got to come from somewhere. We don't have ten million dollars that we're sitting on, so the project slides. I'm frustrated by it too. I've been, I've been looking after this project for six years. I've been fostering this project, going to meeting after meeting, coming to town council meetings, going to MPO meetings, fostering the project, moving it along. I am more frustrated than you can imagine. Because this is a big need, it needs to happen, granted.
Well, with a hard deadline of June 30th, it doesn't give us an option to go to the CARPO and see about doing the CMAC and STV GTA funds in July, with that one time, you know, multi-million dollar infusion into the CARPO region here. So, you know, it's like, you've got to make a decision here, but if you could have waited a couple more weeks and do a little negotiating with other members of CARPO, and perhaps there was a different solution. And so my question is, is how firm and hard is June 30th?
So in order to prepare, I'm just giving you some technical information here. In order to prepare for the release of the STFE, CARPO has to do what's called an air quality conformity analysis, and to make sure that all the projects in the area conform to air quality standards, so they can receive federal funding. That needs to begin, they're looking to begin that process in July. And because this project, whether this project is in the STIP or it's not, will affect that air quality analysis determination. Now, is there, is there anything that says June 30th is a hard past deadline? No, but it's to make sure that we know which way, one way or the other, that projects in that analysis. Now, I will tell you, this will come up for discussion at the MPO meeting here next week. There's certainly an opportunity to begin that discussion. If it looks like, you know, there's ground on moving this product forward, and as Scott just said, we want this product to move forward. If there's negotiations happening, there's conversation says, hey, we look like we can find a way to move forward, we will do everything and work with you guys to the extent possible to make that happen. But just, we've got to see some movement forward, is what I'm saying.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. One other thing that you said, that the frustrating thing, I think, for Indian Trail is, is you just said the residents of Stallings will be sitting at home, and the Indian Trail people are going to be sitting in traffic, basically, is the question, I mean, was the answer. And they're not giving you a dime, but in order for Indian Trail to get what they need, they're going to give you ten million dollars. And that's, and I know, we've been all through that, and I know what you're going to say, but...